Start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that President de Groot is excused for this evening. My name is John Hewitt and I am filling in for, as president, to run the meeting tonight. Roll call.
Claussen?
Here.
Washburn?
Here.
Batia?
Here.
Doxy?
Here.
Anastasio?
Here.
Hewitt?
Here. We have a public hearing regarding an item that has come up, and I'm going to just read a narrative here. Following a brief presentation by our staff from the planning department, I will ask any applicant to describe the petition, and if you wish to speak, please fill out a public form, which I've already told you, and you can find those at the table as you came in. Then, once they recognize the speakers may come to the podium and identify themselves with their names and addresses, please speak clearly into the microphone, and I will call people in favor of the application first, and followed by those opposed. Speakers must direct the discussions toward the board. There will be no allowance of interchange between the members of the audience and the petitioner. We request that you do not interfere with or interject comments while the person has the floor. Please keep all comments on the particular item before the board, and no other person has, excuse me, and no longer can have than five minutes. If a spokesperson represents a large group of people, then we will allow up to 15 minutes if there is that large group of people. So, at this time right now, we will call for the public hearing to start. I have... Robin?
Yep, that's me. Hello, everyone. Thank you. So, we just had one rezone up for public hearing this month. It is for the Luan Drive certified, no, Luan Drive rezone application. It is also accompanied with a certified survey map, which does not need the public hearing aspect. So, this is on Luan Drive parcel ID 151032204018121. The owner is Doris, let me see if I can get this right again, Rocheski? Wow! And applicant, the applicant is David and Donna Johnson. A little bit easier. So, the comprehensive plan listed as residential, and the local planning area is four. The current zone is RE and the proposed zone is RL1. The applicant proposed splitting an existing 4.123 acre parcel into two lots. One will be a 20,000 square foot, or .474 acre parcel, and the remainder property will be comprised of the other lot. The purpose is to transfer a piece of the larger lot to an existing owner on the street. Both parcels, both the existing parcel and the one that is to be split off are currently zoned RE for a state residential. However, the newly created lot is under the minimum size for an RE lot, and so requires a rezone to RL1 to be legal. Another option could have been to rezone the existing parcel of the applicant's to RE to allow a legally conforming merge via lot line justment. But staff recommend against that route because two separate developable lots are in the long-term interests of the village, and it was also agreed upon by the residents, the applicants. So, this application meets the RL1 lot size standards. It does not include, the lands contained do not lie within tax increment districts or anything like that, and it would be just creating one new lot. So, we, this passed 7-0 from the Plan Commission last Wednesday, and staff only have one recommendation for approval, and that the village president shall only sign this ordinance. At the village board also approves the corresponding certified survey map application, CSM 0522. Thank you.
Is there any other?
Oh, so there was a question as to the ownership based on the GIS report, and that is reporting as a land trust for the owner that is represented here. Does there are children?
And should we hear from the owner or the applicant?
If they wish to speak.
They're here?
Yes.
May I have the microphone, and please identify your name and address?
You don't, you don't have to speak if you don't want to.
You got everything, Robin? Okay. We'll save you. Is there any other else that needs to speak on this? And if not, we will close the hearing.
No, we speak for.
Oh, our... Well, I do have two names that want to speak. Nola Starling Ratliff and Deborah Hickney, Hickley?
Is that on this?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Something else?
It's on the other certified survey map application on Emstyn Hills Road.
No, we'll close that hearing, then. There's no other speakers that have signed up, and we'll go into a public comment. And I will call Nola Starling Ratliff up to the microphone. Identify yourself with your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Nola Starling Ratliff, and I'm a concerned citizen, and I live at 5451 Emstyn Hills Road. And I've lived there, moved there in the year of 1992. I, and I'm going to speak as an "I" and a "we" within the neighborhood. We're, we have heard that there are plans to build duplexes. We all live in homes. We have houses, and we are in a neighborhood. We're owners, not renters. We know what happens, what occurs in our neighborhood when winter, when, when we are no longer owners but renters. We would like you to please enlighten us the plans of what's going on on Emstyn Hills. When are these duplexes, if they're going to be built? When? Where? How many? Were there notices in the paper that we were aware of this? Opening the street that now the, this private area, which I live right next to, is now opened, and people will, it will come from all the way from Ohio, all the way into our neighborhood. No longer will there be homes, but duplexes. So, we are concerned. I am definitely concerned. Thank you.
I have another speaker has signed up. Deborah? Please identify yourself with your name and address.
I'm Deborah Hickey. I'm 5425 Wakefield Ave. So, my backyard will be up against the houses that will be there. And so, my concern is that if it's not single families and duplexes, that potentially I could have 18 different families or 18 different people in my backyard. And I have two little ones, so that's really concerning to me. And with renters, it's not consistent living, so you have people coming in and out, and that's very concerning to me as well. And with the road coming in and out, that is also a concern that will bring in more traffic and more people coming through our neighborhood. So, I would like you guys to think about that, that there's other options besides duplexes there. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Robin to direct some information. Okay. No, we'll, is there any more public comment? You guys have got?
It will be shortly.
That, well, we're gonna, we'll do that as a part of, from the, on the air?
Yes.
It's on the agenda. You got? Is there anybody else that wants to speak for or against the Emstyn Hills?
John, is it appropriate now to mention the phone calls received?
So, is, did you receive phone calls on the Emstyn Hills?
Yes.
Okay, so I think what's going to happen here is when, as we move down the agenda, there'll be a request to take Item 6, which is Emstyn Hills?
Yes.
Off consent and onto the regular agenda, onto CDA.
Okay.
So, when we get to that, then we'll...
Voice the opinion then. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I did not, so I...
Okay.
Was not aware of that.
So, we can move to?
We will, we'll move to the presentation of the bike race. Carrie? Pedal up here, please.
All right, yes. So, I just have a quick presentation.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, sorry. I'm Carrie Grevee, and the Mount Pleasant Tourism Director. And what I'm here for tonight is to give a quick update and thank you on the Mount Pleasant Momentum Bike Race, which just happened last Wednesday, June 22nd. The course was out at the Foxconn site. We used roads out there because they are not super well-traveled, and also they're brand-new. So, if you are a biker, you know there's nothing in life you like more than smooth roads. What we did, I don't know how, whoop. Okay. So, just to give you some quick rundown on what this event was, we've been, typically this race takes one year to plan. We decided to apply for, to be one of the host cities in April. So, April, May, June, that's three months versus 12 months of planning, and I will admit, I was a little nervous. We've never done anything like this here before. Part of this race was the, we were part of Tour of America's Dairyland, which is a well-known, established 11-day race course. Happens all throughout Wisconsin, different host cities. Every single day, they go to a new city, set up a race, hold it, people race, then they pack it up and leave. So, it's a little bit different than your typical event that takes a couple days, whether it's set up or tear down or all those things. We did everything in a day. It was the best event, surprise event, I think I've ever had in my whole life after seven years of doing this kind of stuff. When something like this happens, you need to say thank you to everyone who was a part of it, and also tell people why it was awesome. So, that's what I'm going to do quickly, I promise. The momentum, some of the pictures here, it was an amazing day. The weather was beautiful. The week leading up to it was 100 degrees, 100 degrees, and then on our day, it was 85, and windy, and sunny, and beautiful. So, we were already starting the day off well. We had over 400 riders racing, 400, yeah, right? That's what I said. 400's a lot, and especially when they've never been here before. Many of them have never even heard of Mount Pleasant. Honestly, we are not on the bike map, but now we are. So, of those 400, many stayed overnight. They came, you know, the night before and stayed over and/or stayed over that same night because they didn't want to travel to their next city just yet. People, here's the kicker. People stayed all day long. So, how that works is typically this race, you get assigned, you're going to race at 2:00 in the afternoon. You show up at like 10:00, hang out a little bit, get ready, race your race, and then you get out. At our race, everyone stayed all day long. The people that arrived at 8:00 AM in the morning were still there at 5:00 when we closed. People thought it was fun. The racers thought it was fun. Spectators thought it was different. You were standing out in the middle of literally open road, watching these professional bikers race. Our parking lot was full. We had way more cars than we expected, mostly because there was none of the in and out. It was, it was in, and then they stayed. Speaking to the racers, some of the feedback I got from them, they loved this race because it's different. The other 10 days, the course is a one-mile criterion. If you don't know what that is, it's a super-small race, packed really tight typically in a downtown where you just race really, really fast in a circle. While we had a different experience with ours, they thought that having a break from that and being out on the roads for a five-mile course, which is what we had, was an experience. Many of them have never raced that way. They didn't know what to expect, and it went better than they could have ever expected. One of the concerns was they thought it would be too easy. It was not too easy. With the wind and the open road, it was hard. It was difficult. I had racers telling me that they were not prepared, that they couldn't wait to come back, that if they would do this again next year, they are more than willing to train a little harder and be prepared for the wind. It was just, it was the hardest race. Many of them sat out of the full 11 days. Mount Pleasant Police Department was outstanding. They were wonderful partners. They kept everyone safe, informed. We didn't have a single problem on the road. I, my volunteer staff was just as wonderful. They kept people in line, kept everyone on their bikes minus the crashing parts, but that was their own fault, not anything we did. And we all, it was really a community event. Everyone worked together and did their job. The Tour of America's Dairyland is thrilled. They were completely shocked by how well it went and very excited. We had four food trucks there throughout the day. They were there the entire time. They sold food all day. Didn't run out, which is something I promised and maybe could happen next year. I wanted to, we had international racers. The race team from Germany was there. They ate pretzels from a food truck, German pretzels from a food truck, and told me they felt like they were in Germany. And I said, "Well, I'm, I'm not sure if that's great or what," but I took their picture. And here's some video, just in case you want to see a start. Well, video's awesome. I encourage everyone to come next year. It's a lot more fun in-person. We had juniors racers, which are nine-year-olds, all the way up to masters, which I believe our oldest racer was in his 80s. So, this is the, quite, runs the gamut of age. And I had racers from Illinois, Alabama, Colorado, like I said, Germany, Ireland, New York, California, everybody. It's, and then a couple from, some from Wisconsin, but honestly, it's much more of a national event than it is a state event. We had gold medalist Jennifer Valenti was here. She didn't win. Right? But she was part of her race team, and she was here training for the next Olympics. So, things like this are undoubtedly the best promotion we could possibly have. I wanted to, again, thank everyone, the media coverage. I don't know if you saw the paper, but like, front page, big pictures, lots of wonderful reporting. I had more than one reporter there, which is awesome, and not always the case. And also, I would say the biggest win for us, besides this going off really smoothly, is, one, they're already planning next year. They can't wait to come back and, you know, how we can improve. But also, there's mentions now of possibly that same race course being a national championship course.
Wow.
Yep. I've never had, I mean, I've hosted a lot of bike races and races in general, but I've never had the national interest that I did after this. I've had phone calls from multiple papers, multiple media throughout the country, looking to see if they could come next year, possibly hold a US, you know, a trials race here, too. So, huge thank you to all of you for making this happen, to the PD, to the media, to the volunteers, to everyone. It really was a fantastic day.
Carrie, very, very briefly, would you also just quickly say where the other races were held in Wisconsin?
Oh, sure. The pinnacle race, their big one, is Downer. It's on Downer Avenue in Milwaukee. They also have one in Janesville. There's a Shorewood, Tosa, and a lot central, kind of in that Milwaukee area. Because it's only, you know, it's one day. They have to travel, so they can only be within reason. And I also forgot one thing, and I need to thank Robin more than anyone because Robin has helped me get this off the ground. He had some personal connections that made this happen, and without Robin, we would have, A, not laughed.
He did not participate.
He was stoked. No, but he was there. He would have participated, maybe next year.
They need to put it in an e-bike event, and then I'll be in.
Yes, exactly. Robin's looking for the, a little less effort.
Virtual race.
He posted on Facebook.
Yes, we did do. So, a thank you to Robin, and yes, so all around southeast Wisconsin.
Good. Very good.
Yeah.
Carrie, thank you very much. It was a great presentation, and I read, I read about the race in the paper and on the social media and everything, and I was very excited that Mount Pleasant was included. So, thanks to you and Robin. Next year, virtual race, anyway.
I only did like the first, like, first like 2%. That's 98% of it.
My, my only comment is, my only comment is that I wonder how many people were there to watch the race?
Oh, spectator-wise? Off and on, I would say there were, throughout the day, maybe 500 to 700 people.
Yeah, the comment that I would make is that next year, I think we should promote it heavily before the race, so most of the community...
It was, it was.
We did.
It was.
Yeah.
It was.
On a day like that, I'd like to see thousands of people over there.
So would I. Now that I know we can do it, that we should ramp everything up next year, absolutely.
Otherwise, great job. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, don't go away. Anna Marie, please.
What are you doing? Oh, hey!
We thank you, Carrie.
Anna Marie, go up to the microphone, please.
Oh, my gosh!
Sorry.
Carrie, we thank you for promoting Mount Pleasant and getting these wonderful events into our community.
Well, I appreciate that, with your busted hand.
That's fine.
Thank you very much. I'll see now. I don't have to do it.
It was a great event, all on Facebook, as well as all the multiple media was on TV. Wonderful. Good job. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Other pictures.
Okay, moving on to other, other things, anything like that. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Hewitt? I would...
Just wait. What happened? Okay, okay.
Trusty Hewitt, I would like to make a motion to adopt the items in the consent agenda with the following additions. Number one, in regards to the approval of the new and renewed 2022-2023 licenses to add to the Class B licenses, the Delta Hotel and the Sap Sap Restaurant. And number two, to remove Item Number Six from the consent agenda, so that we can have that under a different discussion.
Second. Let's have a roll call, please.
Claussen?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
Doxy?
Aye.
Anastasio?
Aye.
Hewitt?
Aye. Eyes have it. Okay, we'll take Item Number Six as we get down lower to Item D in the community development, which we can do right now. Sam?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read the entire executive summary? Would you like me to summarize it, or would you like me to just be available to answer questions? Direction of the board. I can do whatever you'd like.
Go ahead and do your, do your job.
Okay. I'll summarize the executive summary.
Thank you.
This passed 7-0, or 6-0, sorry, at the Plan Commission last Wednesday. The applicant proposed splitting the existing just under .8 acres and just under one-acre lots into six different parcels. They're all about 10,000 to 10,500 square feet. Both parcels are already zoned, RL1, that's residential low-density 1. The application includes the dedication of Emstyn Hills Road. The applicant also proposed three lots and roadway dedication directly to the east. However, the city of Racine controls that land division approval. This complies with our comprehensive plan, which recommends residential areas for the subject parcels. And we have generally six recommended conditions for approval. One is that the applicant shall amend the stated zoning... One is that the applicant shall amend the stated zoning on the face of the CSM to the existing RL1. Two, the applicant shall remove the planning commission and approval lines and the village president lines to include only the village clerks attesting to the village board approval. Number three, the applicant shall install traffic calming measures between the city and village to slow traffic, such as curb bumpouts, speed humps, or chicanes. Such features should be subject to approval by the public works director. Number four, if the applicant chooses to construct the village and city sections of the total development on different timelines, the applicant shall install a temporary circular or T-shaped turnaround within the street right-of-way. Number five, the lots which front the public roadway in the city are subject to the city's approval of the right-of-way dedication. Then number six, the applicant shall revise the site plan document and related engineering documents to plant street trees. Per section 74-815, the total number of trees to be planted shall be based on one tree for every 50 feet of frontage. On all streets proposed to be dedicated in space on an average of 50 feet apart, the required trees shall be planted in the area between the sidewalk and curb in accordance with plans and specifications approved by the public works director. Street trees shall not be planted on steep slopes unless in walled plant beds or at bottom of swales. Trees could be installed outside of, but within 5 to 20 feet, depending on the species, canopy size, and street rights of way where steep slopes or other physical constraints exist. The requirement for street trees may be waived by the Plan Commission if substantial alternative landscaping, including trees, is to be provided within the land division in accordance with a landscaping plan approved by the Plan Commission, for which they did not submit one, so we're assuming they will plant street trees. With that, both the village staff and the Plan Commission recommend approval of the certified survey map application. To answer a couple of questions that I heard during public comment as well, firstly, the type of unit is not specified under the application. This is just related to the division of land and creating lots. So, the zoning for which the parcels have currently is RL1, which allows either single-family or duplex units by right. So, they could do either as it stands currently. There is no way under zoning for us to limit this to just single-family or just duplex or a specific mixture of either. They can do either or under the zoning by right. The other item regarding, that we wanted to highlight was specifically that condition regarding the continuation of Emston Hills Road. We have heard the comments with neighbors concerned with the continuation of the street through. We don't really have an ordinance way to prohibit the connection of Emston Hills Road, which is why we wanted to call out those specific requirements for either curb bumpouts, you know, or other things to slow traffic between, as it transfers from the city to the village, just to make sure that we can do what we can out there to slow traffic in a physical engineering standpoint. So, with that, I can answer all the other questions the village board might have.
Does the board have any questions of Sam? And then, after that, those people who received telephone calls, I'll ask you to make your comments.
Okay.
Are any questions of Sam regarding what?
Chairman Hewitt, if I might, just a couple of questions. Number one, the status with the city of Racine, have they looked at it yet, or?
No, we're running ahead of them right now.
We're ahead of the city, okay.
They, I believe they applied at the same time, but we're slightly ahead in, just we're a little bit quicker.
I'm.
I'll just chime in and say that their zoning is also kind of corresponding, that their zoning is R60, so there would be, but their zoning is limited to single-family, so that their side will be split into three R60 lots, and all of that is by right as well.
Okay. I'm somewhat familiar with the, with the piece, having worked on Regency Hills, and I think that this is a, this is one of those pieces that we see that oftentimes does get the neighbors very concerned, because you're used to living without that road going through. You're used to living in that neighborhood as you have for many, many, many years. And Emston Hills Road was always meant to go through, and it was to be a connection between the city and the village and a way to get east and west. And that has been on the books for a long time. And I appreciate your concern over traffic and the new traffic that may come through with this, and I think that, that Sam and Robin, in their comments, also are aware of it. It's a wider road section, 90 feet as opposed to 66, which is typical. And I can see where that would be of concern to you, and I would hope that when this does come through in whatever plans they have. My other question would be, is sewer and water extensions required, or, so they will have to do engineering plans with the village, they will have to account for stormwater with the village, they will have to show us their paving plans, and at that point, our engineers would be having in mind your concerns and be able to look at some of those traffic calmers, as we call them, that will hopefully alleviate some of your concerns over your children and, and enhance traffic. But unfortunately, I'm aware, or fortunately, I'm aware of the fact that, that, that road has always been meant to go through. Are they going to be having sidewalks on the property?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't see that in the conditions, and I was sort of thinking you might've added that in, Sam?
Yeah, we're trying to get away from the friendly reminder conditions to just be ones that are actual conditions for approval.
All right.
Are addressing something, but they will be required to put in sidewalks. It'll be a full urban road section.
So, again, that's part of our code now, is that any of these new sections coming in have to have sidewalks. And maybe, you know, connecting to subdivisions like Regency Hills and Georgetown that, and yours, that don't have existing sidewalks, but that is now a requirement, so that we can keep the kids within those new areas safe and off the streets. So, having said that, I, I think that the, the key to remember here is we're, at least in my mind, is we are approving the CSM. The zoning is in place. That is not something that we, as trustees tonight, are tasked with. And I did get a couple of phone, a phone call, I should say, from a resident, and he was not able to be here tonight, as did some of the other trustees. And I addressed his concern, and his concern was the same as yours, the duplexes. No one has stated they are building duplexes. It is simply allowable, and, and that's a big consideration. We can't control that. But I did take his objection into account, but again, I had to remind him that under the current zoning, it is allowed by right, and at this point, they haven't made any declaration as to what they want to do there, simply that they want to create the lots. So, in, in that regard, I, I have to support our ordinances and our code, and, and there's, there's nothing here for us to really object to in that regard, because it is allowed by right.
Anna Marie?
Yes, I received a phone call, too, from Mr. Stockwell, and he asked that his name be attached to opposing the CSM and any further development on Emston Hills. So, I told him that I would voice his concern with his name.
Well, you heard anybody else? Robin, or?
Adam.
Ram?
Yeah. I want to also add my name that I also got a message from Mr. Dale Stockwell, and actually, I wrote him back, because I did look at the application, the CSM application. I'm on the Planning Commission, but unfortunately, I couldn't be here on that day because I was six. But I did study the application, and I called Sam, and I talked to him. I take all of your concern very seriously. That's what we are here for. But at the same time, like my colleague, well, trustee Washburn has, has said, I echo everything she says, because the task right now before us is not, we are not approving any duplexes. Task is, the applicant is, the application is to decide, to divide his lot into six lots, and each lot goes from 10,000 square feet and, you know, and above. So, right now, I don't see how we can deny the application, because we don't know if they're going to build duplexes or a single-family home. If I look at the, the application, the plot, to me, it looks like a single-family. And all the other concern, the valid concern, I guess if I was living on the same street and if somebody wants to build the duplexes, I probably would have the same concern as you have. But right now, again, the task is, is an application to divide the lot into six lots, no more, no less. As, as my colleagues have, trustee Washburn has already said, and Sam said, and Robin said, when the plans come to the Planning Commission and to the board in the future, our engineers, and we are mindful of your concern, we would be looking at, what are they proposing? Are they proposing duplexes, or it could be single-family lots? Plus, you know, the, the road, like I heard, the road was always meant to be open, but I was pleased to see that in the application, that they have plans to mitigate the traffic, the speeding, and they're planting trees and the landscaping and everything. So, as much as I share your concern, like I said, if I was there, I probably would have the same concern, plus wait and see what the site plan would be. So, at this point in time, based on what I know now, I don't see how I can oppose the application just splitting the lot into six lots.
Are there any other trustees that?
I have a quick question for Sam, actually. This will show my ignorance on, can I go? This is Andrew Doxy. And Sam, the RL1, does that allow for rental properties? I don't, I'm not sure of that. It does?
It, it does in general. There are certain limitations if someone owns a front, single-family house. The zoning district allows backyard cottages, like a kind of accessory dwelling unit, they call them, like a smaller rear unit.
Right.
Those, if you have one of those, only one can be rented, but if they are, we, the zoning district allows two-unit houses and twin houses by right, and those don't have any regulations regarding ownership model.
And does RE allow for rental properties?
Yes.
Yes, so they both do?
Yeah. Generally, the ordinances are pretty silent on owner versus renting, generally due to fair housing regulations and state regulations regarding.
So, the change?
More or less, we more or less always have to be blind to whether something is renter or owner occupied.
So, the change in this zoning doesn't affect whether they can create a rental property or not?
The, the existing zoning doesn't really have many limitations regarding owner. And to be clear, they're not changing any zoning here. The zoning already exists.
Okay. Thank you.
And that might, if I might add, might answer one of the other questions regarding public notices. Notices did not go out within 300 feet, because the zoning, they didn't apply to amend the zoning. They were applying for a development that was allowed under the current zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but I, I do have follow-up question for Sam. Do we know, or does the audience, anyone know, do they have the Homeowners Association, HOA?
I would, they'll have to have some sort of HOA for any private amenities.
Reason I am bringing it up, because like trustee Doxy was asking, are there any RL1, it doesn't stop them to have a single-family or duplex or the rental. I guess where I'm getting is, if they have an HOA, maybe HO has some kind of covenant that you cannot rent it, because many HOAs have this. Maybe Nancy will know the answer to that.
Well, I think the whole question of the rental properties is a very difficult one to answer, because we do have fair housing laws. There were times when those were greatly, HOAs tried to restrict, and there had been a lot of, there's a lot of case law against it. So, the issue over the rentals, I, I think we're getting ahead of the project. I think they've come in to divide the lots into single-family lots that have an allowable use that allows the duplexes. We haven't seen that yet. There, the HOA in restricting rental uses would be very difficult to do that.
Yeah.
Based on the law, just based on the law of the land, not just our code. So, very difficult to restrict. They could build, build single-family houses that they rent. This is a great rental market for single-family right now. So, they could build single-family homes that we, they would rent, and we can't restrict that. So, I think that time needs to pass, and, you know, again, what's before us tonight is the certified survey map and the land division. There is no zoning in front of us.
I agree, and, and like I said earlier, based on the application, I can see, you know, how I can oppose. The reason that I brought it up, because where I used to live in my previous neighborhood, we had HOA had that restriction. You could not rent it. That's why I brought it up, you know, to alleviate any concern, but I agree. I go back.
Very difficult to do today, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. So, Mr., so trustee Hewitt, if I would go ahead, then I think I need to make a motion to, because we took it off the consent agenda, I'm going to make a motion to approve the Emston Hills Road certified survey map application, CSM 0622.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Emston Hills certified survey map application, CSM 06-22. All in favor?
We hear a roll call, I think.
Aye.
Roll call? Roll call?
Clausen?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
Doxy?
Aye.
Anastasio?
Aye.
Hewitt?
Aye. Ayes have it. Moving on to other items on the agenda. Discussion from Public Safety, trustee Doxy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 5-2022, reallocating funds from the sale of fire engine number nine as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chief Stedman, would you like to chime in at all on this item?
No, I, we gave our information to the board. We certainly appreciate your support.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to make another motion to approve the MOU for the Joint Wellness Fitness Initiative with South Shore Fire Department, Local 2939, as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the State of Wisconsin Department of Emergency Management for participation of members of the South Shore Fire Department in the State of Wisconsin Urban Search and Rescue Task, Task Force Response Team.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, Chief Stedman, your comments, please.
Just one comment about the MOU with the Wellness Fitness Initiative. You know, we certainly thank the village board, both village boards for support of this. It's very important, I think, to our department, to our members, to their health and wellness. And the village boards, both of them have supported the South Shore Fire Department over the years in allowing us to make sure that they have good fitness equipment in the buildings, that are able to use it, and they certainly appreciate that. And I do believe that it's going to help us in the future, continue to help us in the future, reduce our injuries and illnesses and things like that. So, thank you again.
You're welcome.
Good job on the sale of the, of the engine eight, or engine nine, too, by the way. Good job on that, chief.
I had a friend that was hoping to bid on it, I think.
Went, went much higher than we thought it would, so that was, that was good news.
I do. I have a village administrator report this evening. I am excited to announce that we are moving from Facebook to YouTube for our live streaming. And the reason why we're doing that is because YouTube is more transparent and accessible to the citizens. You don't need to have an account to access YouTube like you do for Facebook. So, and you all know how I kind of geek out when it comes to our strategic plan. That is actually one of the values that is on our strategic plan, if you recall, is that we are transparent. So, we're, we believe we're achieving this, and of course, that will begin with the July 11th meeting, so we wanted to make the announcement so that folks can make the change. There'll be a lot on our social media regarding this going forward, so that citizens know how to make the change. There, by the way, are still comments, but if you wish to comment, you will need to create your own account. But just to livestream and watch, it'll be out in the atmosphere for anybody to watch that has access to the web.
So, they can watch it on their YouTube channel, on TV?
Yep.
They can watch it on their phone?
Yep, Roku. Anybody who has Roku, just click on that YouTube button, and you get to watch us livestreamed.
Okay.
And recordings. It'll be one-stop shop for Planning Commission and Village Board recordings.
One final...
So, a lot easier for our citizens to, to find them, so.
I was very pleased to hear about that.
One final report from Anna Marie, community events.
Oh, well, you just heard the, the fantastic job that Carrie has done promoting the events coming to Mount Pleasant. There are several other events coming up, and we will be reporting on them as they occur. So, we have awarded money to, I think there were four or five requests for funding, and we, as the Tourism Committee, we have given those sponsorship dollars. So, you'll see a lot more of that coming up.
Great job, great job.
Anything else? I have one more motion request.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second. We are adjourned. All, all in favor?
Aye.